We seem to be holding at about 29 or 30 from the public, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. I actually now have a gavel. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 18th, 2020 Board Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Okay. Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes, I am here, thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Menji?
Yes, here.
Mr. Sinto?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Regal. I will accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the June 4th, 2020 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Sinto moves.
Larson, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Has anyone sent in comments this evening prior to the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Feinberg, we have one comment to be read.
Okay.
Okay, the first comment is from Craig and Megan O'Neil, 108 Glen Arbor Road, Haverford Town, PA 19083. "We appreciate the opportunity to be heard by the school board this evening. We are writing with regard to the 2020-2021 school year. We have two boys in the Haverford School District. Our youngest will be entering third grade at Chatham Park and his brother starting sixth grade at Haverford Middle School. It is our understanding that no decisions have been made yet on whether our children will return this fall to live in-classroom teaching, online teaching, or a combination of both. We appreciate the opportunity to be heard on this very important issue. When the schools closed back in March, we assumed, as so many parents and teachers did, that it would only be for a few weeks. However, as time progressed and the weeks turned into months, we watched our children become more and more socially isolated. Our generally happy boys were now spending the majority of their time inside without any friends or live teaching. Eventually, the Google Hangouts began and they were able to see a few friends and their teachers for a brief period of time. However, replacing a seven-hour school day with an hour-long Google Hangout simply does not compare. Our kids became more and more lonely, isolated, withdrawn, and even began to show signs of regression to a younger age. We are not alone in experiencing these issues, as many parents have expressed similar concerns with their kids. We understand that the teachers did their very best during this extremely difficult time. However, the assignments during flexible learning fell well below grade level. Neither of our children received online classes with live instruction for learning new material. Instead, the older one received recorded lessons with weekly check-ins with his teachers to ask questions, while the younger one mostly watched short videos that were well below his capabilities. Again, this is not meant as a criticism to the teachers, but merely to point out the reality that online learning simply cannot compete with live classroom instruction for K-12 children. While we recognize that the data on COVID-19 can be hard to navigate, we believe it is now clear that the health system in this state has not been overwhelmed by the virus. Businesses are reopening, people are returning to work. In light of where things stand now, we believe that the problems that come with isolating kids from their teachers and peers for months on end significantly outweigh the risks of returning to school in the fall. We are both attorneys and understand the difficulties the district is facing while navigating through this unprecedented time. However, the state has left it to the individual school districts to develop a plan that works best for them. We feel strongly that our children should return for live in-class teaching in the fall. This should be Plan A, based on where things stand now. We understand the conditions can change, therefore, procedures should be put in place now for online learning, or Plan B, in the event that the conditions significantly deteriorate in the fall. If some parents wish to keep their children home at the start of the school year, we completely understand. However, they should then homeschool their children for that period of time. But we cannot continue to isolate our children while hoping for a vaccine that may take more than a year to develop or never come. This is simply not a viable long-term solution. Thank you for your consideration, Craig and Megan O'Neil."
Thank you. Are there any other questions submitted?
No, that's it.
I'd just like to say that we certainly understand the situation that our families are in, and we can appreciate it. There are board members that have young children. We are paying very close attention to a number of task forces, both locally and at the state level. And we'll talk about some of those a little later on in the evening. But we're in a situation with 500 other school districts in Pennsylvania where there doesn't seem to be any clear statewide direction. And we will be collecting as much expert information as we can. We do have a couple of doctors from Children's Hospital on the agenda tonight. I don't know if they're going to make it, but they're on the agenda. So hopefully, though, they will be coming in to talk about some of these concerns. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Rishi, do you have any comments?
I do, Mr. Feinberg, but I'm going to suggest that we recognize our students, the next item on the agenda. And then I'd like to, my remarks somewhat dovetail the remarks about opening of schools. So I will wait, if that's okay?
That's great.
And this evening, we have Abia Numbesi joining us. And I'm not sure if Martin, or he's known as Trey Imeno, is along with her. He was hoping to be able to get here. I want to remind everyone, these are graduates. So we really appreciate that they're making time to come and allow you to congratulate them on the walk that they organized in solidarity with Black Lives Matter that took place in the township on June 7th. They just did an outstanding, remarkable job. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Feinberg. I know you wanted to make a few remarks. And as I said, I do know that Abia is in attendance this evening.
Thanks, Dr. Rishi. Abia, I think on behalf of the board, we'd just like to recognize the great work that you folks did. You really put together what looked to be a wonderful event. Great turnout by the township residents. And, you know, this is, I'm hopeful that these issues will stay in the public consciousness and that we'll start to see some significant incremental change. I know that at many levels around the state, I'm seeing people more focused and with more energy on equity issues and racism issues than ever before. So thank you for your great work. We also just want to acknowledge the high school's African-American Cultural Enrichment Club and their advisor, Leon Smith, who's been an incubator for some of these efforts over the year. Would any other board members like to comment at this point?
I was going to say something at the end, but I can say it now if you want. Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I had the pleasure of being there. Oh, hang on, my video's not on, sorry. Hold on one second. Okay, great, hi. Yeah, I had the pleasure of walking with you and participating in the march and protest. And I cannot express how amazing you and the other student organizers are. The amount of work that you put in to organize the event quickly. And I think I was, I had no idea how many people were going to be there, but I would estimate somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 attendees. You worked with the township and the police department to coordinate rows closures. You organized speakers. You coordinated with donors and volunteers. You had set up water stations and hand sanitizing stations, and you all spoke very powerfully in front of the crowd. I think you all deserve every possible acknowledgement for your efforts, your emotional labor, and your leadership. I know that this is just the beginning, and we, myself, the school board, and I think the whole Haverford Township community look forward to supporting you and your organization's next endeavors. So thank you.
And it looks like Trey is in the public audience, not over here in the panelist audience.
We'll get him moved in.
Congratulations, Abia and Trey. Thank you very much for the work that you did and bringing this issue into our backyard. I don't want an answer right now, but on their heels of the success of the event and the sentiment in the community, I would like to ask the Haverford School District Administration, what can we do to participate with them? And like I said, it's not something I need to have answered now, but it's something that I think we can continue to ask and discuss what we can do as a school district. In addition to the work we've done with Basis, if there isn't more, we need to find some more ways.
All right, I can tell you that there are a number of initiatives coming out of PSBA. I was on a webinar today that was the first in a series of, I think, four webinars that they're doing on equity. And I believe that they'll also be pushing out an equity, a model equity policy, and a number of other initiatives, including things to help with minority hiring, which, as you know, the district already has been putting a lot of attention into. So any other board members like to comment at this time?
I just wanted to thank the students for arranging this incredible event. It was just so powerful to see all of the students, not the students, but students, people, older people, younger people, multi-ability people, children, walking together, people from different cultures, racial backgrounds, just walking down the streets of Haverford Town and demanding justice and change. It was a great opportunity to see my neighbors come out. And I didn't walk, but I did participate from the sidelines. My four-year-old daughter was also there, holding up a Black Lives Matter sign. And it opened up the opportunity for me to have a discussion with her about what her sign said and what it meant. And it was just an invitation for us to have that discussion, and it's a discussion that we're continuing. I know that being and attempting to become worthy of the term "white ally" is an ongoing struggle. It's a lifelong struggle, and it's not work that we can ever give up on. And I just, I encourage other white people to keep up the passion for this, because we are the problem and we are the ones who need to help just make sure this change and racial justice happens. So thank you.
Dave?
Yes, I wanted to echo, I guess, what everybody else said. I don't want to be too redundant or anything, but I was there on Sunday. I'm marching with Laura and saw Kristen there in St. Elaine as well. Doesn't impress me because she's expecting the day now, so we just see everybody there. But no, that was a huge event. It isn't that easy to plan those things out. You guys should be commended, Trey and Abia. And I'm so proud to see students from our schools really take this by the horns and, you know, do something about it. I was thrilled to see it. I was so happy that we had something in Haverford, you know, in our township that could attend a lot of people to trust themselves. And turnout, obviously, was phenomenal. So thank you very much. And I can absolutely assure you, you know, as school members, that this is going to be an issue that we are going to address as thoroughly and as completely as we can throughout our times here. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys being able to show up this evening as well.
Any other comments from the board? Abia, Trey, thank you both very much.
Thank you. I'm not sure if he's on the call. He had a last-minute scheduling conflict, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
You're here, okay.
Abia, Trey, is there anything that is planned that you can let us know about now? Or things that you're thinking about that you would be, you know, comfortable sharing? Not to put you on the spot in any way.
Abia, do you want to talk about the T-shirts that we're going to be selling?
Yeah, so right now, we're, the group of organizers are working with a person who's praying out shirts for us. So we're going to be selling them. And all the proceeds are going to go to Grassroots Law Project. I think that's what it's called. But it's basically just helping and empowering black and brown communities throughout the U.S. So all the proceeds are going to go to that. And the shirts will say, "I stand with," "Haverford Town stands with Black Lives Matter." And I think we'll also have, "I stand with Black Lives Matter." So right now, that's what we're focusing on, but we will definitely be having more initiatives and more to come after that, so.
And we'll also be selling lawn signs, too, on top of that.
Yeah.
And how about some voter registration forms?
That will definitely be happening. June Park is one of the organizers, and she is really passionate about voter registration. So I'm sure that she will take that and run with it, definitely.
June was on, there was a Southeast Regional Teen Town Hall focused on racism and equity issues last Friday. And June represented Haverford very well in that. There were students, I guess, from 12 or 15 regional school districts. And they met online like this with not just state legislators, but also some of our members of Congress and Senator Casey. So keep up the good work. Thanks for coming this evening, and thanks for everything you've done.
Yeah, thank you guys for attending the march and just supporting us and everything.
Anytime.
Then keep us informed of your additional work and how we can support you.
Yep.
Good, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that Dr. Rubin has joined us.
Yes.
So the next item on our agenda is recommendations for safely reopening school buildings. And this comes out of Children's Hospital of Philadelphia Policy Lab. And I'll introduce Dr. David Rubin. You're muted.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of opening comments, and then I'll quickly let go to the Q and A, because I think the decisions about reopening schools are very locally derived. And they have to do with your, the buildings, your capability in terms of distancing students and other things. I will say that we're operating under a couple assumptions here. I will guide you to go to the policylab.chop.edu page for our school guidance, which is really a menu of options that curates all the available evidence that continues to unfold even this week. Some of the assumptions we make is that we need to understand, I think, I know the focus is on the students, but it really has to be more about the caregivers and your teachers and your staff. The kids are really at low risk. I need to emphasize that. They're at higher risk in some ways from influenza. The hospitalization rate is probably less than one per thousand in this age group. Most kids are asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic when they get this virus. They also are infected at far fewer rates, at least with regards to PCR testing, maybe even tenfold less than adults. And there's some emerging evidence that they don't transmit as effectively as adults, because they don't have as many respiratory symptoms. Now, you know, I've been talking to K-12 and higher education schools. The focus has been, there's a lot of anxiety out there among families. Am I going to send my kid back? To me, the anxiety as a physician and our infection control team at CHOP is more for the potential transmission that might occur from a staff member or from a teacher or the health considerations of that staff member or teacher or of the family members at home, particularly those who are, you know, compromised or may be older and may be worried about being exposed. So that said, when you look at the menu of options, you need to understand those dynamics and realize that the moments of transmission in a school setting are really about symptomatic individuals, often adults, at times when there might be large crowds or gathering. And there's also an aspect, and that's from respiratory transmission. And then there's an aspect of fomite, or what we call surface contact transmission, where that requires good hand hygiene and frequent disinfection. And so the kind of initiative is, when you talk about respiratory transmission that you're seeing out there, they talk about sort of when are we going to wear masks? Or how far to space apart the tables or the chairs that students are sitting in? How far to distance the teachers? Should they be wearing face masks or shields? Yeah, those are the type of things you do for respiratory transmissions. How many kids on a bus, right? And then on the hygiene side, it's washing your hands every time you walk in. It's maybe moving kids out of cafeterias where they're sharing food and trying to kind of limit that as much. And then the frequent disinfection of bathrooms in the school in general, in terms of what we think about. Now, there's a lot to take up, and as I've worked with different school districts, there's all the things you could do, and there's the things you will do. And I'm sure by now you've read the Bucks County guidance on how they unpacked it. And having spoken to the Department of Education, they intentionally did not get prescriptive, because we're operating under sort of what our best choices are here for each individual school district. I would think that at a minimum, what I would be focusing on is your sick policy and how you're doing what we call daily symptom screening of kids and staff in terms of the school environment. That relates to whether you use an app or whether you just have families that, you know, highly educated that no kid with respiratory symptoms or with obvious symptoms that could potentially be COVID be admitted into school, you know, during the daytime. Same with the teachers. And the more rigorously you enforce your sick policy, and you can even extend that to exposures at home, if there's a known COVID-positive patient at home, you then have a number of options. We have what's called the symptomatic child who is tested positive. That student can go to online learning, likely will be mildly infected, because it's rare when we have the severe syndrome. But that student does not need to be retested before school entry, can return to school 72 hours after the fever has resolved and assuming respiratory symptoms are resolved. The asymptomatic child who may have been exposed, right, is the one that, you know, that people talk about. Now, if a child is asymptomatic, I think you have two choices. One, if you're not testing them, then they should quarantine for a couple of weeks and do online learning from home. That's the best way to kind of see whether they're going to become symptomatic. You could, you know, that's as conservative as you get on that window. But if the child gets tested and is PCR negative and is asymptomatic, it doesn't mean that there isn't a possibility that child might become symptomatic. It just makes it a lot lower risk to bring that child into the school environment. If you wanted to be a little extra cautious for the exposed child who you are permitting back, you could have them wear a mask. But I'm not even sure you need to do that. But to me, the strict guidance is around sort of identifying symptomatic kids or adults. The teachers themselves, the people who really need to be masked effectively and distanced effectively are the teachers and the staff. And there are newer masks actually come out. I think there's a company called Clearview that's starting to make a mask that actually has some transparency to it, which may be helpful, not just for hearing impaired children, but for children with ADHD, kids who are distractible. I think it's important, it's hard to teach when people, for some kids, when they can't see the teacher, what's coming, you know, them talking. And so I think we need to recognize that. But they need to be masked. The face shield is a nice option, goggles are as well. But if the teacher's standing 10, 15 feet away, that's great, too. I've seen some districts are putting up sort of like a sort of, they're using Plexiglas, they're wheeling in like a chalkboard, right? And they're separating the teachers from the kids. These are all different creative solutions people have done to try to keep, to space the teachers away from kids. I'm not sure it's necessary to do that, but at the very, at a minimum, for those teachers who are in the district, I would mask them or put a face shield on, unless they're teaching outside in the warm weather and they're 10, 15 feet away from their students. I think it's fine for them to take off the mask in those types of settings. If you're in a large gym and they can distance, I think that's a little bit better in terms of ventilation. But that, to me, is the, you know, and then along with hand washing and hygiene and disinfection of your bathrooms and crowd control of your bathrooms, I think that, to me, is the essence of what I call the backbone of what your strategy is going to be. And everything you add to that is not going to be as incrementally effective as what we just talked about. Now, with regards to masking of students, I think, you know, people, no one's not going to tell you not to mask the students, but I think it's, I think it's potentially a huge distraction, particularly in younger children. I'm not sure they can effectively do it. I think it'll become a distraction of enforcement within the, it'll become a distraction of enforcement, at least within the schools themselves. I think you could probably ask the middle schoolers or the high school kids to do it more effectively. But I think you saw that, you know, Bucks decided not to mask any of the kids, and they're focusing on their staff. And I think that was a logical choice, knowing what we're knowing, knowing what we're learning about transmission. It's just about how risk tolerant you're willing to be. As far as the spacing of desks, you see, you know, for a long time, we've talked about six feet, and certainly the adults need to really honor that. The WHO recommendations that people saw about three feet, what's three feet? At some point, you have to have an honest appraisal, three feet, what does that mean? That's people trying to make an assumption about the fact that children are less transmissible. But at three feet, you might as well just assume that you do your best to limit occupancy in rooms if you can. But you're not going to be very effective controlling kids in a classroom and saying you can't get within six feet or three and a half feet or four feet or five feet. And I just have some practical concerns of whether that's accomplishable. I think it's more accomplishable to move, to use either community buildings or use large gymnasiums, space kids out. You go outside, you know, spend more time outside. But really focus on the spacing of the teachers and the cafeteria staff. That, to me, is where the value is for all your interventions. So I'm going to stop there. I've covered a lot, and there are going to be very specific questions. But that's how I've unpacked what can be very confusing recommendations to try to find a practical solution that people could feel comfortable with. And we can also talk during Q and A about, well, what do you advise parents when their kids come home from school? And so I'll stop there, and we can cover your questions.
Bridget, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wondered what your thinking was on groupings of students. I've seen some guidance to try to limit the movement of students through school, which is easier for me to imagine in the lower grades, but not in a high school where the teaching is so specialized and typically requires kids to move from room to room. Do you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, look, if you kept the same cohort together every day, you're going to have less mixing, and so that'll help in terms of the kids. But it's also about practicality. It's not going to be as valuable as your intervention that's focused on protection of your teachers. And so having the kids rotate and the teachers kind of be walled off is probably higher value, because the most likely transmitter in that school is the teachers and the staff. And we've seen that from data overseas as well, that within households, the direction of transmission has most often been from the parent to the children. And so, you know, I think that's one of those decisions you just have to think about. Yes, does it add value? But how disruptive is that to your school policy? There's a certain amount of accommodation to risk and practical solutions that you have to do when you're developing this policy.
Thanks, yeah. I had a couple questions and points I wanted to discuss. I think, I think it was great that you just jumped right into the weeds, but just to like back up a little bit.
Yep.
You know, the report that came out from CHOP very clearly says that this, you know, prioritizing in-school learning. And so, and I really, you know, appreciate that. I think we've heard that from a lot of members of the community and students as well. And so, you know, this has given a lot of different factors. And so I guess I just want to get your opinion on, if we were going to go back to school tomorrow or this week, next week, that would be your recommendation? Your recommendation would be to, that in-school learning should be prioritized with safety measures?
Yeah, I think we're also learning from Europe. We haven't seen big, big sort of outbreaks related to schools reopening, at least not yet. And so you're having more and more data accumulated as to what is actually the risk. And, you know, the closing of schools was controversial even back in February, March, because people weren't sure about the, how much marginal benefit you were getting from closing the schools. At the time, it was all hands on deck, because we were not prepared. But I could, yeah, my opinion... But I could, yeah, my opinion, based on the transmissibility data from the new, the new nature article that, that you may, that you may have heard of this week, is we should be getting kids back in school and we should be trying to keep them in school. Um, and that our best community interventions are masking in crowded locations, a focus on hand hygiene, gathering size. Um, and if we did those things well as a community and protected our outbreak locations, it's that the schools are not going to be the main source of problem. Neither have the, the daycares.
Um, thank you for that. Um, and so I do, I want to go back um, to what you were discussing about, you know, the six feet distancing, which um, I think has become sort of synonymous with, you know, the recommendations that of the public as a large have been given. Um, but, you know, from, from what I understand from the report and what you're discussing now, um, there's no research that six feet works better in a school than five feet or four feet. Um, and I mean, just with our classrooms in particular, um, having six feet of distance could be a potential impossibility. Um.
And you give up on the, on this, on the three, six feet on the kids and give me ten fifteen feet for the teachers and the staff.
Right. So, so I guess, so that, so that would be a way to get around the six feet would be protect the, the staff, like you're saying, more with more distance.
I'd say that protecting the staff is also protecting the students because they're, they're, they're the most likely transmitter in the school. And so being very, if you're going to use the tests that you have and the surveillance, you really want to be on the teachers and the staff because you really need them to be honest. You need to have paid leave for teachers and staff if they have exposures at home. That's how you're going to keep COVID, a COVID outbreak out of your school.
Great. Um, sorry, I've got more questions. Um, so I, I, because I do just want to focus on this mask issue too, which I'm, I brought up. Um, you know, it's something that, um, I think that probably a lot of people in the community don't, um, don't understand. And, um, so your recommendation is masking is important for our, um, our staff, our teachers. Um, but masking is not really going to make a difference to our kindergartner. And, and so, um.
I just don't know if it's, if it's accomplishable. It's also going to be, there's a trade-off in the distraction to learning. Um, and, you know, from my perspective, this is about the practical. This is, as we've talked, you know, there are sometimes there are decisions that are made for liability that are made to, to uh, um, to address anxiety. But, you know, the downside of masking younger children, it, it, you know, is pretty significant. And the, the potential benefit is uncertain. I think we need to understand that in kids. I'm not talking about adults. Um, when you're in those markets, the adults, you know, people should be wearing masks, uh, you know, as people are going through those markets. Uh, we're learning, I mean, what's happening in Florida right now and in Texas and Arizona, and our, and our team is following it closely, was preventable. Um, and people did not want to accept the, the trade-off of wearing masks in those locations. But schools are a different environment because you're dealing with less transmissible disease and also less, you know, less of an issue in terms of impact. It doesn't mean that a kid can't get really sick. We've seen a few. But it's on the order of rare. Um, and, uh, and I think that we need to understand that and, and, and factor that into the practical solutions we create for school.
Just to interject with a clarification, when you're saying adults, we have kindergartners, but also students who are up to the age of eighteen, which in instances counts as an adult. Um, where is, is with all?
Where would you, so I would reflect that back, you know, I've thought about that. I think that, you know, some places would say just let all the students. I think it's a good civics experiment for your high school kids for sure, to learn how to wear masks. They're old enough. Whether, you know, the question is, what's the trade-off in terms of, and certainly the risk goes up for, for transmission as you get to those fourteen, eighteen-year-olds. Do you do it at sixth grade? Do you do it at ninth grade? And these are the kind of, there is no evidence to guide you there, um, but I think it does make some sense to involve the older kids in the plan.
Okay. Antoinette, any other questions?
Yeah, I just really quickly for the benefit of the, of the public. Um, can you just discuss how important it is that everyone in the public, um, is updated on their current vaccines? The vaccines that they're supposed to be getting, um, you know, just in, just in the regular course?
Okay. Yeah. So a couple of things on that, absolutely, in terms of regular vaccinations. If we, if we fall down below MMR vaccination rates, we're going to have problems with, we're going to have more problems than COVID on our hands. It's when you fall down below a certain level of community coverage that you thought you start to get into measles epidemics. That's a real problem. A real big one for, um, for this year, I mean, you know, is influenza vaccination. All my comments about COVID disease are qualified with a but, we've never seen COVID and flu in the same child. Um, and that's, you know, influenza is an ugly infection in kids. Um, for those, I have, we have seen enough in CHOP over the years with healthy kids. We've lost, what, three or four kids in the United States to COVID uh, thus far, maybe a few more. We lost a hundred and fifty this past flu season, and some of those kids were healthy. Um, just so to me, a, 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 a really rigorous influenza vaccine campaign is going to be critical this winter to assuring safety of our students. Um, keeping your immunizations up today, keeping pertussis out of your, your, because a kid with pertussis is going to be coughing for weeks. You never get that kid back into school. Plus, you know, in terms of infecting other folks and potentially exposing younger infants and elderly folks in the community, uh, to a pertussis outbreak. So those eleven-year-old vaccines and those four-year-old vaccines that get you into school, really, really important.
Okay.
Thanks. That's everything I had. I really appreciate you being here and going over all this with us. Um, it really benefits us and our decision-making, but also the community as a whole. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, you're up next.
I'll go first. I'll go to her.
Okay, Kristin?
Put me on the spot, Dave. No, thank you. Um, so I have a few questions. I'm thinking about school buses. I saw the recommendation was that students should wear masks on a school bus. Um, I guess a question to consider is why are we in, in, why are we asking students to wear masks on buses but not in schools? And I guess a question for the district is how are we going to enforce that? And what would consequences look like if students are refusing to wear masks on buses?
Yeah, it's a part of your equation, right? Which is, anything you put requirement to is to be enforced. Otherwise, it's not a requirement. And that, and, and there's a lot that goes into that. I think as I talk to other school districts, you remember, these are a menu of options. I suspect that your school, but you know, there are options to increase the number of school buses, just ask kids to space out. I suspect a lot of parents, just out of safety or concerns about safety, are going to drive their kids to school. So I'd be worrying about your parent pickup line and how you're going to get, get those cars in and out of those schools. Because, uh, you know, I think understanding from the parents, how many wish to use the bus versus not can help sort of potentially alleviate the concern about the buses because you have fewer kids on your buses. But could uh, aggravate issues in terms of traffic at the, at the school. And so I think there's a dynamic there that you can play off of. A lot of school districts don't have the extra resources to get extra buses. And I think whatever you do in the school with regards to older versus younger kids probably can be mirrored on the, on the school buses.
Um, and then thinking about younger children and asking them or not requiring them to wear masks. Um, I know there's a whole range of parental perspectives on children wearing masks. I have friends who don't have their children wear masks because they don't want them to be traumatized. Um, I'm pregnant currently, so we're very, you know, we've socialized my daughter to wear a mask. And she has basically, um, learned that, you know, people who don't wear masks are doing the wrong thing. That's just the way, you know, that's how we get her to wear a mask, basically. Um, so where I'm going with this though, I was just wondering, does CHOP offer any resources? Or do we know of any resources out there that can kind of help children understand? Um, that maybe when they come back to school, they don't need to wear a mask. Like, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking.
Actually, we, we actually, we just, just developed new fact sheets on, uh, for schools. And they're being developed with Susan Coffin from Infection Control. If you email me offline, um, I will make sure, once those documents are finished, they, they get into some of these questions about, uh, about guidance for parents around school. They're, they're less focused on school districts and they're more focused on parents from CHOP's perspective, and we can share those. Um, it is confusing. Um, I, I, I just want to agree with you. And, you know, the question is, if you, you know, i- i- it's not an easy decision. Uh, because a lot of families have worked really hard to get the kids to start wearing the mask. And there's certain settings I think they should still wear a mask, like in the markets and in those areas where there are a lot of adults around that could potentially expose them. Because putting the kid close to the adult is the differentiator there, right? And, uh, and that's how I would message it to them, right?
Um, and just a pedagogical question, I guess a consideration for the district. Um, just thinking about if we are going back to school and students are three or six feet apart, or however we, um, we configure them. This is really going to create a pedag- pedagogical shift. I know we're focusing a lot of energy and resources on what the digital space is going to look like for learning. But I know in our classrooms, there's a focus on socio-cultural approaches, socially constructed learning, having students in small groups, lots of student talk. Um, I just think this is really going to shift the way that we're teaching our children um, when they come back to these reconfigured in-person spaces. So just another consideration for us. Thank you.
Dave?
Thanks. And thank you, Dr. Rubin. This has been very informative, actually, and actually very good to hear for a lot of people. I have, I have one question, um, I have two questions actually. One, did you, do you have any thoughts or any guidance on contact tracing with regards to those who, who may be positive? Is there any kind of?
You know, I, I, as we talked about this with infection control, um, I think if it, it has to really be a close contact. So with, if you're going to have a few cases in your school, we're, we're going to be at a different level of whether you're going to go back to online learning and quarantining. I think it's going to be very difficult to trace all the kids and have them all get tested. It, you know, this is really a conversation with your, with, do you have an independent health department in Harford? Or are you part of the state Department of Health?
We are farmed out to Chester County currently because Delaware County does not have a health department.
Okay, uh, yeah. Um, and so, um, I think there is a marriage that needs to happen here between the Department of Health and the schools. I don't think schools should be doing their own contact tracing. So the degree to which, which contact tracing is going to occur is really, you know, what you, what the schools can do is the surveillance of like, are you sick or are you exposed to anyone who is sick? Once, you know, and, and keeping kids out who are asymptomatic. If you have a child who was asymptomatic and then becomes sick and doesn't come to school, the question of what to do with the other kids is, you know, is really a question of a discussion with the Chester, uh, uh, Che- um, the Chester's Department of Health as to is there enough? Do they want to contact trace everyone in that classroom? And if you get a few cases, you've seen schools elsewhere close down quickly. The other is to assume that there are also, there are measures in between where you might do masks for a few days of the kids within that classroom, as you wait to see if anyone becomes symptomatic as an extra precaution. So there's different variations there, but I don't think it, the schools should be doing their contact tracing themselves. This should be done by the Department of Health and based on the guidance from the, from the Health Department.
Okay. And my other question was, not to get too far into the weeds here, but just thinking about an issue of supplies and so forth. For teachers, you do recommend masking for them. There's been a lot out there about what masks are most effective, N ninety-five versus simple cloth versus whatever. Just to, just so we can plant ahead a little bit.
Yeah, I'm going to be very clear about the masks, right? So, um, I don't think N ninety-fives are necessary. We're not using them at CHOP. We're not using it at, at Penn, right? In, in everyone. That we're using them in special circumstances where we're, we're providing aerosolized treatments when the risk is higher because of the aerosolized, like a nebulizer. So your school nurses, I would not, I would prohibit the use of nebulizers in the schools. They should use inhalers and spacers for the kids. It's, it's much safer in terms of aerosolization. But a good surgical mask is better than a cloth mask. And those are pretty cheap to come by now on Amazon. Uh, they usually have a, you can fold them at the bridge. I do think goggles, if you can't do face shields, goggles also help in terms of direct contact to the eyes. Some of the clear goggles, uh, can help as well too. Um, but I don't think it needs to be an N ninety-five. Uh, would, would I make an exception for someone who's, you know, a, a teacher who might be immunocompromised or have severe lung disease or something like that? Sure. I think there's always the permutation that's a little bit different. But, but I think just good hygiene, distancing and just a surgical mask. And, uh, you know, whether it's shield or goggles is probably going to be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Sal.
Dr. Rubin, thank you for being with us today. Um, I just want to go back to that concept of working with the local and state health officials. I, I think a lot of what we're hearing today is very positive in terms of our students being able to be in an environment that is, you know, uh, a positive environment for, for learning. Are, are we still going to be in a situation where we need to be prepared to potentially shut our schools down? And, and what is, in your opinion, obviously deferring to our local health officials, when the threshold of, of that would potentially happen?
Well, certainly if we have uncontrolled widespread transmission, they're going to shut it down or go to online learning. I think we talked about having sort of a very flexible schedule, like you should have, you can, and it can be differentiated. It could be in three or four different stages. When you're in full learning and you think about it as a district, um, when you might go to some sort of flex scheduling uh, for kids, when you might go to online learning. You know, the, the, the one that seemed the most pragmatic to me, uh, whi- which I thought was really innovative was, um, some school districts, when they, when there is some level of increasing transmission in order to space the kids out, are moving the high school kids to remote learning. Because they tend to do a little bit better with the remote learning than the younger kids. Um, and then they're moving the elementary, the middle school kids into the high schools. Like they're spacing kids out into more classrooms, right? And, and fewer kids per classroom. That one seemed a little bit more practical for a couple of districts that I work with. But in general, um, I think it's mostly going to be full school learning, some online learning. Uh, uh, versus online learning is going to be the most practical solution. And I'm hoping that if we don't see a lot of transmission in schools or big outbreaks, and we haven't seen them to date, that we're just going to continue in-school learning until we have a situation where we have enough disease burden in the community where we have to go to online schooling again. And that might be later in the fall. That's led to some recommendations to open up earlier, um, like, you know, maybe a couple of weeks early. I know that's a tricky decision for a lot of school boards to open up in mid-August. My daughters are, I can see them behind me. They're already looking at me with cross eyes on that decision. But kids are already kind of doing sports in the, in, in the late summer, so that's a possibility. And also thinking about going to online learning, planning either for online learning after Thanksgiving or planning uh, for a longer winter break. Because I, I do worry that the winter is going to be harder than we can manage with, with full in, in-school learning. And that we know from influenza that if we have an extended winter break, it does help reduce community transmission.
So you, so you do see that as potentially a fluid situation in which?
Oh, absolutely.
We're looking at numbers throughout the year and making decisions based on what those numbers say.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's where the Health Department, I think you're going to, the state's eventually going to provide guidance if they think you're at a level, uh, where they, where they absolutely need to have you go back. But we're working with the state to, to tell them that that's not your first move. Getting kids out of school is not the, you know, and I think as we have more evidence, I, and do I think it's possible that we might reach a, a situation where other things happen, the kids stay in school? Absolutely. Um, and I think you're seeing that in other areas right now. We're going to have, we still have, we're still gathering evidence from Europe. We're going to have more evidence from, from overseas as we move into the fall as well. And I think it'll be very clear based on the patterns that we're seeing, whether we're going to online learning or whether we're going to push through with school even as sort of, uh, community cases increase. We have two X factors, which are the vaccine, uh, that I'm very much, uh, knowledgeable of the developments there. I think it's a bit of a crapshoot, if I'm being honest with you, as to whether it's going to work. I think it's likely to be safe. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot, you have the best people in the world working on this. I think it's more likely going to be ready for the following year. So hopefully it'll be, uh, that. But if we get lucky and, and one of these vaccines work and we're able to deploy them, I think teachers and staff are probably going to be, you know, I, I would be advocating for teachers and staff in schools to be one of the early recipients alongside our healthcare professionals and our grocery store clerks and our prison guards and, and the, and the staff in nursing homes. These are the folks that are high exposure or max transit folks who are high exposure workers. Um, but I think beyond that is the possibility that we're going to get better treating COVID. And I think we, you know, I've seen some optimism in, in the last few days that if we can bring down the case fatality rate, because we've learned how better to treat the complications, which by the way, are mostly immune mediated. The severe disease, there's a huge immune aspect to this. And if we get better at treating the immune-related aspects of this, we saw a study about dexamethasone that people may have read about a couple of days ago. Once the fatal, fatality rate, if we can get that to drop a bit, and I think we are going to get better with it over time, that changes the calculus. And I think another, is going to be another argument to keep kids in school.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next, Bridget?
I had, um, two additional questions. One was, it sounds like the plans are largely for staff and, and families to self-assess and report symptoms. And it seems like some of the symptoms have overlaps with other kind of common ailments, allergies, whatnot. Um, so I'm curious what your take is on, on what education should, we could be doing to help improve that assessment? And the second question then is about, um, are there activities that are typical in schools that you would advise not occurring? I'm thinking of sports, B. advise not occurring? I'm thinking of sports, band, chorus, those kinds of activities.
CHOP just released its sports guidance today. It's a really good stuff. I don't have all the time to cover all of it, but it's a really good plan, very easy to follow and understand, that was developed between our team at Policy Lab, our sports medicine team, our injury team, and our infection control folks. And so you can visit our site and get access to the sports guidance documents. It also has this sort of ramp-up and different activities you can do at different levels of community transmission. Clearly, on the sports stuff, you have, not all sports are created equal. Tennis is fine, right? Lots of hand hygiene, but tennis is fine. But football is a different sport, and certainly indoor basketball is a different sport because you have a lot of close contact and potential for transmission over an extended period of time, you know, and sweat and all, and all the such. But that doesn't mean that at low periods of transmission, kids can't play. And there are different ways, and they're discussed in these documents of, you know, if you're doing more focused testing or surveillance, really focusing on those contact sport athletes, and really being strict about who is able to play or not play. And a lot of that is reviewed in that documentation. There might be periods of time as well that you can't play those kind of sports because the transmission in the community is too high. So starting your season earlier and ending it earlier in the fall might give you a couple extra games there for some of your fall sports. In terms of parents, you know, a lot of the messaging to parents is what, you know, well, first to the issue of self-assessment. You've been talking to the state, and there are a number of apps out there. Like, it would be nice if employers and schools and a lot of our facilities were using the same app. They're very simple apps. Like, I think an investment in a very simple app, that, you know, if you wanted to be really strict about your sick policy, that people actually have to fill out that information. It's just a couple of questions before they can enter a school, and then they're sorted into you need to stay home versus, or it quickly sorts them. The school, the state has been discussing this, but these, you know, these simple apps are available now, and you're going to see them pop up during the summer that just ask you if you have any symptoms, or is anyone else sick at home. To me, focusing on that part of the pathway, that self-assessment and how you assure yourself that that's been done, it's going to be better than temperature assessment. Temperature assessment may find you a few kids, but that assessment of symptoms is actually the most important thing that you're going to do because that's going to help you sort both the staff and the kids. When kids return home from school, I have thought about, there are some situations where there are immunocompromised parents at home, and they're just not going to feel safe. It's just going to be too high risk. Someone who's undergoing cancer treatment, elderly grandparent with lots of health conditions, and you may need to accommodate them with plans for remote learning if they can't do it. A lot of these families are self-selecting out as well, too. They may be sending kids to a private school or doing cyber school. But I do think you need to think about that small group. Your special needs kids, when you go to online learning, the kids that need to be in school and should not go to online learning are the ones receiving services in school. And so you should focus on keeping the kids with special needs and receiving special services in school, even when other kids go to online, because you just can't do those types of services for kids online. And so there's been a lot of discussion about the kids with special education needs. And then finally, in terms of educating parents, when the kids come home from school, I think you can do some simple messaging, which is they get off the bus, you clean the books, kids go right to the shower, right? I do this every week when I come home from my practice. I'm seeing kids who have been exposed, some have been exposed, some well kids. We have a routine in our house that we do that to try to protect each other and from a transmission within the household. And so that's the best that we're going to be able to do. And people have to understand they're accommodating some risk, but the likelihood of transmission from a child to them is going to be smaller, particularly if they're doing the hygiene stuff. And if the child does become symptomatic, then to quarantine them in, you know, at home and mask their child in their common areas so that they can reduce the likelihood of transmission within the household.
Antoinette, another question?
Yeah. And this might be in the sports guidance. I guess it's kind of similar, but is there specific guidance about things like recess? You know, a lot of our kids, I think, really like that.
Outdoor transmission, outdoor transmission is less. We've even seen from the demonstrations in Philadelphia after the George Floyd murder, we have not seen a big uptick in cases. So to me, I don't worry as much about the outdoor activities. And if you limit it with the amount of time that they're doing those activities, it also limits the time exposure that a child might have. And then if you've done a nice job with symptom assessment, the likelihood of an exposure, a significant transmission event happening is less. It's not zero. But I think that, you know, recess is part of school, and I don't think you can keep a kid sitting in their desk all day. I don't think that's a practical solution. So you're going to have to accommodate some risk there.
Kristen, another question?
Just related to recess, going back to fomite transmission, how do you feel about playground equipment?
Disinfection, disinfection, and disinfection. I mean, you just have to frequently disinfect throughout the day. But I don't think the likelihood of transmission is high from playground equipment. Actually, there was a whole kerfuffle, if you remember with the CDC, someone came out and said, oh, transmission is not high from fomites. They were referring to a nuance. It's person-to-person fomite, that's probably a higher, you touch someone else, or you have body fluids, and then someone touches their face. The likelihood of transmission from the surface, you know, over time, there's been a lot of controversy as to whether truly, like your mail or your groceries, like people go to great lengths. The likelihood of a transmission event there is actually really small. But I still would be doing disinfection. It's an easy solution, and it doesn't take a lot of time, right?
Antoinette, did I cut you off?
No, I think he answered it. I was just making sure that his recommendation was that recess is mostly okay.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Rubin, I'd just like to touch on one thing. I know you had mentioned temperature earlier, and I saw in the Bucks County Health Department report, they recommended that parents take the kids' temperature before they kick them out the door in the morning. And I know that there are other places where they're, you know, especially overseas, we've seen pictures of them taking the kids' temperature as they come into the building. What are your thoughts on that one?
Sure. If you assume everyone has a thermometer, right, or can afford a thermometer, right? And, but to me, I mean, I've taken care of kids for a long time. Parents know when their kids kind of have a fever or they're symptomatic, right? I think if you want to be cautious, you could recommend it. But I think the symptom surveillance screen is really what you need to talk about there, right? Kid has a fever, the kid's not going to feel that well, right?
Any other questions from the board? I'd just like to say that, you know, I get the impression that you eat, sleep, and dream this stuff. You've been a very valuable, understandable, well-spoken expert for us this evening. And I think the whole board really appreciates you spending time with us. And my guess is that the parents and families of the 6,500 kids, you know, they've been hanging on every word. So we may see you again before we get to our 10-week countdown to September. But thank you very, very much for being a resource for us this evening.
Right. I'll just close by saying that, you know, there's nothing I could tell you tonight that's going to reduce the risk to zero. The, I feel pretty good about the kids. I mean, it's the parents and the teachers and the staff I worry about more, but even the kids, you're going to have the rare exception where someone gets sick. We've had a few kids come in with that serious inflammatory syndrome. Fortunately, we've been able to treat them and been mindful of parents when the kids are sick, getting them to the doctor to do that. But we also have recognized that for working families, schools are extremely important. It's also important for equity issues in terms of a kid's not falling behind, workforce participation. And so, you know, we have to accommodate to these risks because there are real accumulating risks on the other side for our working families. And so there's no perfect solution. You just have to make the best call that you can make and then try to mitigate and contain risk where you can.
Before we let you go, I just want to mention for the benefit of the board and for members of the public, if you'll bear with me, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association for the past several weeks has been participating in a task force with virtually all of the other education organizations at the state level. They had about 150 people in 10 different task forces, looking at all different aspects of this quagmire that we're looking at to reopen schools. And they issued a report about middle of the day today, which I haven't had a chance to look at yet. It's 135 pages, so that's going to go into the mix, too.
Sounds good. All right. Well, good luck, and let me know if you need anything.
Thanks very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a little more low-key. We'll have Ken Matthews.
Actually, Mr. Feinberg, if I can, my remarks will dovetail a little bit of what Dr. Rubin had talked about. So I was going to jump in here.
Great.
Makes more sense to deliver them now. And to keep me focused, we did take a few of them and just put them into a presentation that I'm going to go through rather quickly. So I want to go back to what actually our public comment that Anna read for us earlier in the meeting. And I want to let everyone know, one of our options is not closing school. That's, we will not, and I said this back in the end of February or sometime in the beginning of March, we're not going to close school unless someone tells us that we have to. Our job is to look to see how we can work within the parameters. But if the decision to close the school is left up to the district, I would not be coming to you with that recommendation. All of our conversations and the work that we are undertaking in the district really is a planning process to look at how will we open schools. So with that in mind, we'll go to the next slide. And just as you mentioned, there are a number of guiding reports that are out there. Last week, we received guidelines from the Department of Education. Earlier this week, we didn't receive them ourselves because we were in Delaware County, but the Bucks County Board of Health issued guidelines, which I can say Delaware County has reached out to, and the superintendents will continue to reach out to Chester County and ask if they can take a look at those guidelines and see if something can be produced through Chester County. What you just mentioned there about the educational organizations, the 10 different task forces with about 150 people, that's what's referred to as the P-groups. And that was, that report just came out today. And in our briefing from the Secretary of Education this afternoon, he indicated that the Department of Ed will be updating their guidelines, and the update will be coming out next week, and hopefully with a little more specificity than what we have, you know, have previously had. It was very helpful for us to hear from Dr. Rubin tonight because the one thing to keep in mind is all of these different sources are just that guidelines. There is no hard and fast, the school must do this, or the school must do that, even within the Pennsylvania Department of Ed guidelines, although all throughout, it talks about six feet, you know, keeping kids apart, keeping desks apart, six feet. It does, every so often, you will see the words in there, wherever possible, or to the extent possible. My new favorite words, to the extent possible. So our hope is that we will get a little more guidance from the Department of Ed and to have folks like Dr. Rubin to depend upon, because I have a feeling that when we come with our plan, we're not going to be able to say we're doing this because this group says we must. It's like we've made the decision to configure our schools this way, or we've made the decision to serve lunch this way, or provide transportation this way, and we'll be saying, you know, because, and giving the rationale for what our thinking was behind that. But so, in case folks have not seen it, that guidance, and we'll go to the next, that guidance for the Bucks County schools, the reason why everyone is talking about it so much, is it actually, the language is actually a little bit stronger. You know, temperature screening will not be required. Buses can operate with two students per seat. It sounds silly, but that's huge. That is huge to put, and you'll see in a moment when we show you some pictures, wearing masks will not be required, a minimum of three feet for, you know, for social distancing. And this is the first set of guidelines where we have seen anyone even talking about using a cafeteria to serve lunch. Everything that we've seen to date references students eating their lunch in the classroom. So I think these five bullets that are here really highlight why there has been so much interest and discussion. And I just wanted to put those up on the screen in case anyone had not seen them to date. So what is our district doing? We have eight task force groups that have been formed, and you can see through those bullets there what those groups are focusing on. Depending on the nature and scope of the work, there can be three people on that. We're up to six people. We are using all administrators across the district. We have, our Haverford Online has its own task force. We want our parents to know now, they do not need to look elsewhere, even if they already know that regardless of what configuration we open with in the fall, that they're not sending their child to school, we have an option for them. And that is Haverford Online. The program has been in existence. We had 75 students in that program before March 13th, and we anticipate that we will have more when we open schools in the fall. But we have a group looking at that, and I'll, towards the end of this, I'll show you why, the numbers that we could potentially be looking at. So the work that those groups are doing now, because keep in mind, we're finishing school tomorrow. So the students finished last week, but tomorrow's the last day for our teachers. So with the school year wrapped up, a lot of what they have been doing is looking at all of these different guidance documents that have come out, and how are they going to address the requirements in each one of those areas. At our July 9th meeting, the team will be here to talk with you about their plan for athletics, to return for athletics. And on our July 23rd meeting, we will be presenting the health and safety plan to return to school. So just to give you an idea, when we talk about, like, these are the things we look at. We actually, this group onto a bus, you know, if we were to have to socially distance at six feet, that picture right there, you can't tell, that's a 72-passenger bus. But what, and what you are looking at, where you see the number, the red numbers, if it's six feet is the required distance, you are looking at getting 12 children onto what typically would transport 72 children. And that's why I said earlier, like, the Bucks County guidance, when other superintendents saw it, the first thing people were saying, did you see what they said about transportation? You can put two kids on a seat. So that, from there, we actually then went into classrooms, cleared the classroom out, and took a look at, like, if we were spacing desks six feet apart, and that's the same classroom from two different angles, those of you who are parents of elementary children or recently were in elementary classrooms, you can see that room is pretty much emptied out. So at six feet, we're getting a total of six or seven desks in there, not much more than that. But we are clearing a lot of the materials that are in that classroom out of there. So then we explored five feet. So what does five feet look like, you know, in that same classroom? And even though it's another foot, it's not enough to make that much of a difference for us in that room. In some rooms, it would be eight. In some rooms, it would be 10 desks that we could get into there. Then we took a look at four. Like, this is the level that we're going into. Four, now, this is getting a little bit better, right? So four, you can get 12 desks, and in a classroom that might be a little bit larger, maybe 15 desks. If a district had to go to a model of, you know, splitting schedules in some way, and this was part of the reason that we asked, the question that we asked of our parents, if we can't socially distance at six feet, but we could at a shorter distance, and we had some parents indicate that, all right, if that's what we needed to do, and we had to split schedules, that's what they would choose in order to have the students there. Continuing on that, however, after we got the guidance from Bucks County, we then looked at the, you know, at the three feet of social distancing. And you can see, we're still clearing the classrooms out. That still has to happen. But you can see that now we're getting more towards what our classrooms typically, you know, could fit students in there. It's encouraging to hear what Dr. Rubin said tonight, in that, you know, I don't know that we would need to be as worried in that, you know, I don't know that we need to would need to be as worried about the exact spacing. What he mentioned, a lot of the adults in the district have already talked about. You know, how do you get a six, seven, eight year old to adhere to that social distancing without making them fearful? And that's, we don't want, you know, if children are afraid, then they're not going to learn when they're in that in that classroom. So the closer we can get the classroom experience to be like what children are accustomed to, the greater the opportunity is for that for their learning. We also issued the parent survey. And that survey, we asked questions about this particular year, you know, and got some feedback from them. But we had a question in there, looking at if social distancing, six feet apart is required, stating that we would be unable to have all children in school every day of the week for, you know, for a full day. We received 4,619 responses to the survey, which is great when you consider that, you know, we have 6,600 students, but keep in mind, 460 of the 50 of them were seniors. So a parent is not going to tell us what they're doing, you know, with their child for next year. We have a survey out now for all of our new registrants. We have over 300 responses in that. Has not closed yet, so that's why I didn't want to include it on here. But the the piece that I want to tie back to what I mentioned in an earlier slide about Haverford Online. We already know that there are about 521 students whose parents are considering remote learning. Now, whether it's remote learning only if we can't do six feet apart, or whether it's remote learning regardless of what we do, that will come in our next survey. We will be surveying again in July, and there'll be more about these logistical aspects, more about the transportation, you know, we're putting, are you considering transporting your child to school yourself this year? That's significant for us to to get to that type of information. But when you, you know, look at this, 521 of the responses indicated that remote learning in this scenario would be their choice. 1,500 would have their child in school, even with social distancing of less than, less than six feet. And the blended model, 2,590 responses. Clearly, we need to dig down. That was just, you know, a question that we kind of put together. I'm sure someone who does a lot of work with surveys, you know, might say it should have been worded differently, or it could have been worded differently. But it got us that initial question out there as part of a survey where that we were asking parents to think about how things were this year and thinking about moving forward. So in Jen Sax's next presentation, she'll, you know, be talking about that survey next in terms of at a future meeting. We'll be talking about the other aspects of that survey and what we learned about the experience for families at the conclusion of the school year compared to when they were surveyed earlier in the school year. So that's why I asked if I could slide in here after after Dr. Rubin, because I do feel that it dovetails a little more nicely with, you know, with his remarks.
Certainly does. Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. Next.
Sorry, I had a quick question for Dr. Ruchi. I just want to make sure, sorry, let me start my video. I know CDC has issued some guidelines on reopening buildings that have been closed down to address concerns related to mold and possible Legionnaires' disease. I just want to make sure that that is something that's being considered and that there's going to be procedures in place for flushing and sanitizing of water systems.
Yes, and thank you for asking that question, Kristin, because you reminded me that I forgot to mention we are working with environmental control. We have a contract with them. They would typically be, if we had any concerns about the environment in our buildings, we've had a longstanding contract. We are one of about 20 some districts in the four county area. And so an environmental risk engineer has been assigned to us specifically looking at those elements. And that will be part of our health and safety plan to reopen schools.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay. Now, the construction project update from Ken Matthews from CB Development. Ken?
Hello, everyone. Thank you. That's some incredible conversations. I commend you all for the decisions you'll have to be making in the coming months. Try and keep it brief this evening. I'll start out with the high school. So right now, we're in the middle of design. We are probably about 50% through construction documents. The Board of Commissioners approved the land development plan, so that process is moving along. We're in the middle of some of our other permitting process, so we looked at construction documents in August and still remain on track to bid out the first phase this fall. So all all on track for that, so that's good news. Then moving on to Linwood, I'm sorry, is there any questions about the high school? Okay. So that, moving on to Linwood, things are progressing really well. You can see there's a lot of progress. If you've had the opportunity to drive by. Behind me here is the gym floor that they poured yesterday. So really, the schedule looks great. Contractors do owe us an updated construction schedule that we'll be getting early next week. And that will really kind of tell the tale. The project's supposed to be done February 1st. They're, you know, looking at, okay, now knowing where they are, what are they projecting? Are they going to be done February 1st, February 15th, end of February? So the good news was before COVID-19, we were about two to three weeks ish ahead of schedule. So it'll be interesting to see where that pans out. So all in all, though, things are moving. There's no issues with getting materials. We've heard that on other projects, but just kind of where we landed, we have most of the materials released, we're receiving lights, because that was a big concern that that would happen. So luckily, things are looking good right now, and we should remain on schedule. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about progress or, you know, the workers have been following their safety protocols like everyone else. We got to remind them, but it seems to be going okay so far as far as masks, et cetera, social distancing. So we can have Zoom meetings. So all of those things are moving along. No real issue or concern.
Regarding the schedule, I know last summer, we were affected by some torrential rains and things like that. Is there anything in the Linwood construction now that is susceptible to upcoming weather concerns?
No, that's a great question, Bridget. Sure, it can affect some of the work, but really just the outside work, you know, the masonry, for example, someone putting in up metal panels, but the roof is complete. There's permanent drains in probably 60% of the building, temporary drains in the rest. So they would be able to continue working on the inside. So it would have a minor impact at this point, which is good news. All right. Well, if there's no other questions about progress, I didn't know Larry or Maureen, there's about, because of kind of COVID. Yes, we have about 20 some change orders. I don't know if you want me to go through every single one, or if the board has questions. Just to update everybody, you know, our process, a lot of these have had a tremendous amount of back and forth. We, you know, we go through the documents, we work with the architect, the engineer, negotiate with the contractor, you know, what's fair and reasonable. So it does take time to flush these out, and we kind of wanted to pile a number of them together. They're all, you know, fair and reasonable. Some are owner directed changes, some are issues with the documents, you know, clarifications, those type of things. So I'll leave it to you. Would you like me to run through them?
I think that, you know, they they're listed in the board packet and, you know, for the benefit of some of the newer board members, I just want to say, having been through several construction projects over the last 20 years, that we're at a point in this project where we're starting to to see some significant change orders. It's part of the process. It's a routine part of the process. They're built into the budget. And, you know, we will expect to see change orders with some frequency as as we go through completion of the project. I would say if anyone has any specific questions on any of the change orders, certainly would entertain those. I know that Kristin has her hand up also.
My question's not about a change order, but I'm wondering, Ken, if you've seen anything where, I don't know, I guess, construction is changing. Requests for buildings are looking different, meaning does construction design looks different to accommodate social distancing? I'm thinking about our high school renovation or addition. And is that something like, want to look back at the plans and think about a world living with COVID potentially? And what a socially distant or physically distant plan might look like? I know we're pretty far in the process now. I'm just curious what's going on out in the field.
We haven't heard anything specific. I was very glad to hear Dr. Rubin say that the social distancing doesn't have to get too crazy, because I didn't want, didn't want to have to double the size of our new Linwood building. But honestly, we haven't heard anything too specific. I have had an architect reach out that they're assisting school districts and other organizations with how to deal with the distancing, how to plan, like what Maureen showed with the desks at five feet, six feet, four feet, three feet. But we have not heard anything specific. As far as the actual construction, you know, it's had minimal impact. And some of the changes here do include COVID-19 costs, which are mostly hard costs, you know, sanitizer, extra bathrooms, extra cleanings of the Port John's on site. You know, the district is graciously cleaning the existing bathrooms in Linwood for the workers to use. So there are some costs with that, and there will be, there are some costs that have been submitted for loss of labor time. Basically, they're saying, look, it's taking me a few extra minutes to check in in the morning. It's taking me five, 10, 15 minutes to clean my tools. So the contractors have submitted that, and we're working with them to negotiate those costs. But we don't see them as any significant impact right now. Certainly, it's still dollars to the project, but it's not not a big concern. So that some of those costs are in here, is some of the change orders that have been submitted. We'll be looking for them on a monthly basis.
Antoinette?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed it. One is, is the projected completion date of the building the same?
So we're, we got a preliminary schedule, waiting for the final one early next week. The project's supposed to be done February 1st contractually. They had a schedule showing that they were approximately showing a finish date toward the end of February, about three weeks behind. So we're waiting on this more, much more detailed update to see how how much that's true or not. And to be honest with where they are and how the project's tracking. You know, I think it's going to be close, and we'll monitor month to month. But it's looking, it's looking like it's going to be relatively close. It's not going to be some significant delay of, you know, they're going to finish two or three months late. Certainly, I'll say that with the caveat, if, you know, there's another outbreak and things change, obviously, we can't, you know, say that that's going to happen or not. Construction may not get shut down again in the fall or this winter. But that aside, if we continue on this path, the project looks to be in good shape.
And so, and most would be at this point, you know, barring anything else happening, it would be a couple of week deviation?
Correct.
Okay, and just to be clear, that is the completion of the building, right? And so not the completion of the project, because the project obviously includes the demolition of the old building. But that's the completion, you know, you, if if something needed to be done in that building, it could be done at that time.
That's correct. It's just the building proper is supposed to be 100% complete. Floors, ceilings, fire alarm, sprinkler systems, mechanical systems, 100% done. That if you wanted to have, you know, move in, you know, March 1st, you could. But that's, this project's very unique, you know, where you have that little bit of time between that and when the students are coming in September. And then over over the spring and the summer, we complete the rest of the site work, demolish the building, build the parking lot, and the project's to be 100% complete August 15th.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Ken, I understand the CDC guidelines for social distancing for construction engineers. They recommend about 3,000 square feet, and your your background makes it look like you're good.
Yes.
Look forward to seeing you next time.
Great. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, recognition of this year's retirees.
Typically, at this meeting, we would have invited all of our retirees to join us, and we will look for a time, you know, throughout the year, next year, when we can gather in, you know, in some in some way. But Anna has prepared tonight just a slideshow to, so you can see who the retirees are and a picture of the plaque that that will be provided to them. So as you know, as you look through there, it's a quite a few number of years. And those employees represented transportation, food service, our instructional assistants, technology assistants, maintenance support staff. There were some teachers in there as well as administrators. So hopefully, we will find a time. The what was pictured over to the right of each picture is the script that is on a plaque that we will be presenting to to each one of those individuals.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I served on task forces or committees with a number of those folks, and some of them taught my my kids, and we just, we thank them for for their long time service to our district and our kids. Any comments from the board?
Well, I I don't have my audio. Does somebody start the video for me? You know, I worked with almost all of them and know quite all of them. And I mean, there's just so much Haverford in that group of people, all of them giving the love, the care, the concern, their intelligence, their enthusiasm to our students. And we have all been very lucky to have all of them, from Margie, who worked in on the computer. She started out counting kids, I think it said 22 years ago. Laura Needles, some Carl, who took care of custodians. That was a big job. He was in charge of keeping our buildings clean. As you can imagine, that was a big job. So I just want to congratulate them all. It's wonderful to see that they have a chance now to enjoy their retirement after a job well done. So thank you from us.
Nice.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the School Wellness Board Update.
And Mr. Feinberg, this is a presentation that Nicole Battistelli will give. Part of it is a requirement that she provide an overview of the work. Part of it is a requirement that she provide an overview of the work that has been completed throughout the year. And that, you know, she started that last year, actually when Valerie Burnett was here. This became a requirement that we provide you with some insight into how we're approaching school and wellness and how the Wellness Committee has been working.
Good evening, Dr. Rishi, Mr. Feinberg, members of the board, colleagues, and community members. Tonight, I'm going to discuss school wellness. Go to the next slide, I can't control the thing. So our school wellness policy is required by the USDA and PDE. We have a school wellness committee, which includes administrators, faculty, students, parents, community members. And a school board member, Mr. Fleischer is our school board member, and he attends all of our meetings. The policy is in support of physical activity wellness, the implementation of the USDA nutrition guidelines, as well as food for classroom celebrations and fundraising. We communicate our activities through our schools, obviously through our website and during our annual update. Next slide, please. Okay, so the classroom celebration menu is on our website, that was fairly new this year. It applies to school initiated celebrations only, so Halloween, winter, Valentine's Day, and the end of year celebrations, which we, of course, all experienced in our homes this year. There are more choices for fresh fruits and vegetables, and in classrooms where there's identified allergy, there are limits, obviously. Parents can also choose to order through food services. At the elementary level, we have 60 minutes a week of physical education. We also have daily recess for 20 minutes and activities like track, field hockey, flag football, and floor hockey. For wellness education, we also have health education and developmental guidance. And this picture is actually Chatham Park's winter activity, so it's just a fun action shot of our students in action. As you can see, we have many activities that support physical, social, and emotional well-being of our students. So mindfulness activities, healthy heart day, character counts, morning meeting, responsive classroom. And there's just some listed here, but the list can go on and on. Go to the next slide. At the middle school, we have PE, 48 minutes twice a week in sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth grade, it's 48 minutes, two to three times a week. And there are some of our students doing some yoga at the middle school. And as far as wellness education goes, we have the sixth grade health class and developmental guidance. And in seventh and eighth grade, we have health. We also have our students participate in a length and all education center, they'll go there for a trip. And the middle school has a ton of activities as well. I would say very popular are the wellness days in the building, which are usually student-driven, guest speakers come in. We have clubs, of course, Potter Cup, which is, you know, a Haverford tradition. Bringing Hope Home Olympics, No Place for Hate, and the Making a Difference Awards, which, you know, this year, we're not in person. We couldn't have the ceremony, but all of our staff and students who are recognized did receive that recognition, even though it wasn't at a big ceremony in an auditorium. On the next page. Also, physical education at the high school. So we have the PE in ninth grade, as well as other electives like lifetime fitness, fitness and weight, and PE concentration. We have wellness education at our high school, 10th grade health, and some electives, health and wellness, foods for today, preparing for adult life, and preparing for parenthood. And many activities at our high school. We actually have a goal at the high school to have all students have an opportunity to participate in an activity or sport. And at this point, we have 85% of our students participating in sports or activities, which is absolutely huge. We have a very active student body. We have a faculty and student wellness committee at the high school. We also have these fishbowl discussions at the high school, which are just amazing, you know. We discuss all the time at board meetings how important student voice is. And I was able to attend the mental health discussion this year, and it was just very impressive what our students are able to discuss. The Mind Your Mind assemblies, you know, our student assistance program, our students volunteer, you know, we have STEAM Day at the elementary level. We couldn't have Field Day this year, but, you know, they typically go over to help out with that and student stress groups. And of course, there are many, many more activities, which can be found on our website, which is why we have 85% of our students participating in activities, there is something for everyone at the high school. Then I just want to talk a little bit about our Wellness Committee. We have Wellness Committee meetings throughout the year. Some topics, we were able to have some students come to our Wellness Committee meetings, which are, it was really great this year to hear from students as to what they're experiencing in school, what they feel could provide more wellness for our students. We discussed Bike to School Day this year, which unfortunately happened in May, when we could not bike to school. But we will talk about it again next year. We started a discussion on snacks that are sold at lunch, and we'll continue those discussions next year. Wellness activities that happen throughout the buildings. Mr. Haran, Mr. Baradoni, and Ms. Master Cola attend our meetings and are able to review all the activities going on in their buildings and at their levels. And this year, we were up for actually a triennial assessment of our policy, which was then pushed back until next year because of COVID. But we did review a large portion of our policy as we went through this year. And typically, meetings are held in the evening at Oakmont, and most recently through Zoom. So if anybody's interested, it's a great committee. And that is my update for this year, if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them. I'm not sure if I'll have as exciting answers as the Chop Doctor, though.
Questions or comments from the board? Not seeing any, well, thank you very much, Nicole, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thanks, Nicole, to your committee and for their work, and Mr. Fleischer for serving on that group.
My pleasure.
Next item on the agenda, Policy Number 204, Attendance and Administrative Regulations, Second Reading.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. And presenting, as you said, for a second read this evening, Policy 204, Attendance. And briefly, as we discussed during the first read, this, this policy is being revised due to a change in state law and a change in the compulsory school age requirements from what used to be ages eight to 17, now expanded to ages six to 18. So that really is the substance of the change to this policy. And frankly, the substance to the AR is also, although there are a few editorial changes in each, and editorial corrections. There have been, there have been no changes from the first read until tonight.
Questions or comments from the board?
I don't specifically have a comment about the policies as they're written, I guess, just a question as we're talking about parents and families who might have concerns about going back into school. And would this policy cover attendance decisions related to kind of pandemic in the world? Or is that something that we would be looking for guidance, again, from PDE about attendance and number of school days that are required?
We will actually look to see if we get any, any guidance from Bridgette. Because what has not been made clear to us is if a child is out and they're learning remotely, if they're not officially like registered in our Haverford Online, how does, how's that recorded? How does the day count? I'm sure it'll be worked out, but we're waiting to see if we'll get that guidance.
Thank you, yeah, there's all kinds of layers of complexity all of a sudden now, and thinking, what does it mean for a child to be in school or present in?
Do we anticipate any increase in enrollment due to this change?
We have discussed the possibility, just, you know, with the economic downturn, that, you know, there may be parents who previously opted to send their children elsewhere, you know, who now may not be wanting to pay that tuition. Or, so, you know, we'll see when we do the analysis, which will be next month, we'll do the analysis of the enrollment. So we'll be able to tell you if we're getting more students from some of those schools.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board on the policy itself? Are we voting on this this evening?
No, it's on the agenda, it will be on the next agenda.
Thank you. And does that take us to the administrative regs for this?
Yeah, I think he mentioned the administrative regs as well. So I think we're, unless there are any questions, I think we're ready to go into the finance and facilities portion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Parker.
My pleasure.
Next item is for information purposes only, the Secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes, the financial report as of May 31st, 2020.
Larson moved.
No, no vote on?
Sorry.
Thank you. Next item is budget transfers. I'll accept the motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $10,330.29.
Minji approves, so.
Did we get a second on that?
Crispin second.
And this is a roll call vote, Mr. Regal?
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Cento?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeterman? Mr. Feinberg?
Yes, thanks, Bob.
You skipped me, but I'll vote yes, too.
Thank you, Antoinette.
No problem.
Next item, I'll accept a motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed.
Schwartz moved.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of the new Linwood Elementary School Project Architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders as listed.
Move, Schwartz.
Into second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll accept a motion to approve a technology lease for the acquisition of One to World Chromebooks for K-9 and staff computers from Apple at a cost of $1,522,932.
Crispin moved, Larson second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Is there a reason why we're choosing Apple products for teachers and Chromebooks for students? And are there any potential compatibility issues with those two different platforms?
Bob, let's have either Sarah, I don't know, Rob, I don't know where, what, organizing the meeting, can you jump in, Rob? Because Rob's been in the district since the inception of the work, and I think it would be good to have him talk about that.
Sure, I can.
Thank you, Rob.
I can jump in here. As far as, we'll start with, so the reason behind the difference is just the students don't require quite as much additional software. Pretty much everything that they're doing is web-based Canvas, Google Docs, you know, all those tools are all web-based programs that they're doing. The teachers have some needs for some software that's not just web-based. So therefore, a Chromebook would not be sufficient for the teacher's use. We've, historically, Haverford has been an Apple district. We've had a short time where we had some Windows devices and had some problems with those. So we've stuck predominantly with Apple devices for our teaching staff. We've just had better luck with them. But as far as compatibility between the two platforms, between the students and the staff, we haven't had any problems. Our high school has been teachers on Mac platform and students on Chromebooks since the inception of the One to World Initiative there.
Antoinette?
And I was on mute. Um, I just want to clarify that this is, this has been discussed at a prior board meeting. This is what I believe Jen presented at the last meeting, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and this is actually a lease, and it's partial, a portion of that payment is coming from CARES money, which you are allowed to use to buy technology devices to support this online learning.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to ensure the public that this is a very large purchase, and it was discussed at a prior meeting. You know, if folks haven't seen that yet, that's where we had the more robust discussion about the One World Chromebooks for all the students.
We got the proposals for the lease, and as you can see, the interest rate on the lease is 1.08%. You're not going to get that low any other time, so.
Well, thank you.
Bridgette?
Could someone just give some context to this purchase in terms of how many devices are for students and for teachers?
As far as the student devices, I believe it's somewhere in the ballpark of 5,500 student devices for K through nine. And then the staff devices, I believe, is, I'm going to be wrong when I say 190 devices, it's somewhere in that general facility. It's a third of the high school, a third of the middle school, and then two elementary schools.
Rob, 194 staff devices.
You were close. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, I'll accept the motion to approve the professional service agreement with the Chester County IU in the development and delivery of professional learning for School District of Haverford Township staff in an amount not to exceed $23,250.
Larson moved, Crispin second.
Moved in second. Dr. Rishi, could you just give a, give us a brief overview of this for the public?
Actually, I'm going to have Jen Saxa do that, because this has been Jen's work, you know, in planning all of the professional development for teachers. So I'll see how she wants to describe it there. I do know it's ongoing, so it's not just a one-day piece, I'll let her get her, collect her thoughts there. You know, it is ongoing, and helping our teachers to build their courses as they also learn about all of the features built within Canvas and how Canvas can be used as that management system for them.
Well, Dr. Rishi, there's not much to add from that, but yes, it did provide us, this, this includes not only two full days of in-service that is not only about getting to know Canvas and its features a little bit, but also about sort of what works with teaching and learning when you are in a blended or a virtual environment. So it was sort of two pieces of that, as well as an asynchronous course that all of our teachers and educators will be able to take. It's a 10-hour course, they can take it over the summer at their own pace, and it will help them, again, to learn more about how to use Canvas and some other web tools, not only in an online environment, but also in a, in a in-person environment as they get to build their classes. And there's also some consultation, set aside of consultation hours that we are going to use to help to train our instructional technology mentors. And those are folks who are teachers, who are taking on some, some extra responsibility to get to know Canvas and the web tools and some instructional technology techniques. And they're going to support their colleagues throughout the year. And so this will include some training for those folks as well.
Thank you. Questions from the board about the Chester County IU?
So I'm looking at the, the next service agreement within structure for the actual Canvas subscriptions. And it looks like they provide subscription training, and it says annual unlimited. There's also what they're calling tier one faculty support. There's also what they're calling tier-one faculty support, so I'm just wondering how that overlaps with CCIU and if we're potentially duplicating efforts here and paying double the money.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. We do, in fact, and will continue to use the online training that is available through Instructure. That is mainly little short tutorial videos that can show you how each of the features can work. They're really good to reference and go back to when you're actually, you know, creating a course. What it doesn't have as part of its work is that pedagogy piece that I was just talking about, sort of the teaching and learning in the virtual environment. It also is nice to have a person sometimes sort of talk you through these things where you can stop and think through it and, and, you know, move forward alongside someone. So we were trying really hard to do with our teaching staff, what we ask them to do with our teachers, provide some synchronous professional development where you have an instructor in front of you, as well as some asynchronous professional development. So yes, we are using all of that in order to help prepare our teachers as they prepare their Canvas classrooms.
And also, is there a reason why this isn't being done in-house? I know we have some time over the summer, we have some new technology people. Can this work be, you know, in conjunction with this Canvas contract? Could our own staff be creating and delivering this kind of PD?
Yes, they will, and that's entirely the reason why we wanted to acknowledge their work with a mentorship role, because as they become acclimated to Canvas, they will be able to do what you know as, and other people will see as, it's called turnaround training. So once you've learned something well enough, you can turn around and share it with someone else. And so we have some people right now in the district that are very familiar with Canvas and, you know, are really amazing resources. What we'd like to do is scale that out so that we have more people who are able to do that and, and can do exactly what you're talking about right there, Ms. Larson, is, you know, we can take it over and sort of make it in-house once we have enough people who are equipped to do that.
Antoinette?
Thanks, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is the first one would be, this is obviously the Chester County Intermediate Unit, and we have a relationship with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. So can you just explain a little bit why this sort of thing isn't covered by our DCIU, which we obviously have a financial relationship with already? This seems to be, you know, on top of, now we're having a financial relationship with two different intermediate units. So you can just explain the difference there and why we have this from Chester County when we already pay the DCIU?
Yeah, sure. Um, a couple of things there, the DCIU, when we, when we work with them to provide specialized professional development, that is an additional charge. That is not something that they, that is included in our support. And I will let someone else speak to what is included in our contracts with the IU, but I know for the times that we've had people come out and work with us from there, there's a charge for that. So the Chester County IU does something similar. You know, the IUs often will offer professional development outside of their own sort of regional area. We send folks to the Montgomery County IU, we worked with the Bucks County IU, so that's not unusual. I will say what is unusual is the fact that Chester County had a series of courses regarding the use of Canvas, regarding this instructional pedagogy in a virtual environment. That was really a good fit for what we were looking for. We wanted to find somebody who had these things that would work with us to make them what we needed, but also that wasn't starting from scratch. They had performed this before, they have worked with many other districts out in Chester County that already had blended initiatives, and so we felt like we were going with something that was a little, like a trusted resource.
If I could jump in for a minute, Chester County IU has been a pioneer in this type of learning and instruction. They, they hosted the 21st Century Cyber Charter School when it was founded 20 years ago. 21st Century was founded by, and the board was made up of the executive directors of each of the suburban intermediate units. So they, they were out there on, on virtual learning, way, way ahead of most of the other IUs. That Cyber Charter School ran in their facility for a number of years before it moved out. And ever since then, Chester County IU has offered a very robust online curriculum, you know, to, to all school districts. So there, there are, an IU that has kind of specialized in this area, and they have a very solid reputation, and they do good work.
Thanks, I had another question on the, the dates of service. So it looks like here, it says the dates of service are from June 1st of this year to December 18th of this year. So a couple of questions related to that, I guess. This, I mean, just correct me if I'm wrong, but this is being presented basically in conjunction with the use, the exclusive use of the Canvas platform for the next year. Is that right?
Yeah, one of the main motivators to get this level of training, this amount of training, was to equip teachers to use Canvas, so yes.
Okay, so I guess my.
If I could just clarify, Antoinette, it's beyond next year. It's, it is not like Canvas is the, is the platform that we're going to be using, whether it's virtual learning or learning, learning in the classroom. So I just want to make sure, I don't want people to assume that this is just in case we're online.
Okay, okay, so, so right, so, so what we're voting on after this for Canvas would actually be the platform that we plan on using for the next several years.
And have been using at the high school for five years.
And so I guess related to that, this is the first time that the board is being presented with both the CCIU contract and also the, the Canvas contract for, for district-wide. And so I'm just, like, some information on, on why we couldn't get all this information tonight and vote on this information at our next board meeting.
We did get this information in the curriculum liaison meeting that was held last week.
Which was not shared out with the broader board.
If you feel that you're, you don't have enough information, you're welcome to vote no on the motion.
Is there someone that was at the curriculum meeting that can discuss, what was, I mean, I guess that this, to me, is really, you know, we're voting on this first, but it's really in connection with the use of Canvas, which we haven't presented any information on yet, and we're being asked to vote on this first.
Well, I, I guess part of it, also, if I could say, Canvas is not new. I mean, you, you have, the board has approved agreements for Canvas every year for five years now. It's an expansion of the use outside of the high school. So I guess on our part, and I'll, you know, take responsibility for that, there was, you know, an assumption we're expanding a license, we did not think of it as something brand-new, but I can see how, I can see now how you, how you would.
I think my big question around Canvas, I know we're kind of skipping, going back and forth between these two topics here. I don't know what Canvas looks like for the younger grades. I understand it works great in college settings with adult learners, and it sounds like it's been very successful with high school, but what is this going to look like in the K-5 setting, specifically six to eight? What kind of features are we looking at? How is it differentiated from the platform as it's used with older learners? So I agree with Antoinette, I'd like some more information on that.
I guess I'll just jump in, because the, I, I also understand, I think that it's gotten good feedback from, from the high schoolers and the, and the folks that I've talked to who have used it. But for the elementary schools, for the past three months, Google Classroom was used, for example. And so, you know, we haven't been presented with any information on why, for example, that, that wouldn't be better district-wide or something like that. And so that's really where my concerns come from, is that, you know, the, the pros and cons of each, the costs of each, et cetera, just it really haven't been presented yet.
You know, I'll speak for the curriculum committee, and we did have those conversations about Canvas and about Google. I don't know what that means. And all of us asked a lot of good questions, but I have to agree with you on Canvas. It's not something that we talked as a whole group about. I still don't understand it as well as everybody else does who's really working, you know, with it today. But I do understand, speaking to colleagues, that it's such a much more effective software operation than anything that we've used before, and that it's much more effective as I've seen it function from K to three. So the teachers are excited about it, but I cannot explain what Canvas looks like. But I can tell you that it's much more, what's the word I want to use? Much more contemporary and much easier for teachers to work now in this time when we are all looking at, I mean, we're not going back to the classroom, we're not going back to smartboards, do you know what I mean? We're going back to really working with kids in the one setting, one-world setting. So it has been, for, I guess, all the districts that I know, the best possible product. We used it in the high school, the high school loves it, the kids love it. And I, to be honest, I was thrilled that Jen was recommending it and that we were going to move to it. Jen, I'll let you talk about it a little bit more than me, you've used it.
Thanks, Susan, yeah. And so just briefly, and I know this won't be an entire presentation, we, we can have somebody at our first July meeting, our next meeting, to share a little bit more, like, a teacher can actually share what that interface looks like. We did sit down with some, with actually a kindergarten teacher in another district, as well as one of their instructional coaches and their tech person, who's also their curriculum person. Many places that, actually, all of the places that I know of that have a one-to-one initiative have a, a learning management system. It's typically either Schoology, Canvas, or it used to be Blackboard, but I don't hear about many people using Blackboard anymore. We had the same question about the younger kids, is it really worth it for the younger kids? When we spoke with the, the teachers about how they use it in, in the district where we were discussing it, and then we saw what some of the survey results were, both from the first survey and the second survey, it seems like particularly for the younger kids, it's going to be very helpful in solving some of the problems that families were having. I'm going to tell you one really simple thing, it's got a next button. So everything goes into one page for the kids to look at. It's got a little picture of a book, and you click on the book for your reading stuff, and a little picture of a, you know, and it's very, like, it's very easy to follow. It has, you can record audio over, so you can give directions for kids that, you know, obviously aren't ready to read yet. It has that little next button, which means there is no going back out to find the link and coming back in. There is no going out to another website. It hosts the websites within it. So once you have Canvas up, if you want to use Flipgrid, Flipgrid's in there, and it's right there. You don't even have to go to a new window, it doesn't even push you out to a new thing. It also makes turning in assignments much easier. I know that was something that was a lot to navigate for families. So rather than having to send an email of something or having to give a photograph of something, it has it right there within the system. So again, I don't, I don't want to get into all the things and like, you know, take up more time this evening, but there are features that specifically for our younger students do make it more organized, more accessible, and will be more, a little bit more user-friendly for the families. On the teacher end, it also has some really solid integration features that can help them give feedback right away on assignments right there within the system. It integrates with our report cards, we can use Rubrik, we can use quizzes in there that can help us differentiate certain groups of kids can get one assignment, other groups of kids get another assignment. And so while Google is great, it was a really great Band-Aid while we were there, it doesn't include some of those more robust features that when you are using a device every day, you really need to help the teachers manage the classroom to help the kids access it and to make it a little bit more seamless for parents.
Thank you for sharing that, Jen. Is there a compelling reason why we need to vote on this tonight as opposed to at the next meeting, after we've all had a little bit more time to digest and make sense of this?
The only thing I would say for Canvas is that they are making templates for us for K to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine to 12. And those templates will help us design our homepages, as well as sort of the organization of our course. And we can't receive those until we have an approved contract, it'll take a couple of weeks after that. So it's certainly nothing that should keep you from making your decisions, but just so you, you know, you have that information.
Laura, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to jump in, I'm also on the curriculum liaison committee. And in addition to everything that Jen has said and all of the amazing advantages of using Canvas, I personally have used almost all of these. I haven't used Canvas K to 12, but I use Canvas Higher Education, that's what I'm using right now. I've used Schoology, I've used Google Classroom a little bit, I've used Blackboard. So I've used all of these, and I kind of know what they look like on the teacher's side and on the student's side. And I have to say, for me, Canvas by far is so much easier to use on the student's side and on the teacher's side. So for, for what that's worth, as a school board member who is also pretty comfortable with these products, Canvas also offers a lot of support. So just, even just, there are so many people that are using Canvas, it's such a commonly-used product that even if you can't get what you need from Canvas itself or from all of the professional development that teachers are going to be provided, you can pretty much just Google whatever you need to do in Canvas, and there will probably be some kind of a YouTube video showing you what to do. So it is, it has a lot of robust features, but also there's a ton of support for it. And then, yeah, for parents, I think that was a big concern for me. Parents trying to help their students navigate all of this stuff, and I think having everything housed in Canvas, like, like Jen was describing, I think that's really going to help parents to help their students learn. So just for what that's worth, we did ask a lot of questions in the meeting and everything, so, there you go.
Bridgette?
I just wanted to add that I appreciate having a platform that allows our curriculum to kind of make a transition into the strategic direction that we have about more effectively incorporating technology to enhance learning experience. It sounds like this isn't just a, you know, oh no, we may not be all together in school, and here's a way to get homework, you know, or school at home going. But as I understand it from having high school student, that it really allows the, the classes to be rethought and re-presented using technology, and like you said, pulling in the links and, and the videos and the content and the, the work submissions. And it seems like an important tool for building a thoughtful technological base to the way that we deliver curriculum in different formats and in different ways for students throughout the district.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to say that it does sound like a good program. I'm just dismayed that we are getting this information tonight and voting on it tonight.
And as Larry began the meeting with the idea that committees should be maybe sending notes out on the weekly meeting, that's one of the things that I guess we missed and that we should have done. I, along with Dr. Rishi and Jen, because I knew that it was being used in the high school, just assumed that it was just going to be opened up. So I agree that maybe perhaps notes should have been done. Is there a way that we can get links and have a look at it on our own? Jen, where are you?
Just for a point of clarification, if I may interject, when you say committee, we're not talking about committees, because I think those meetings would have to be public. These are liaison meetings versus committee meetings. And that's, I think, part of what we're struggling with here, is we have these liaison meetings, but there's no transmission of information from liaison meeting to the whole board before requiring a vote on something.
Well, we had that conversation last year, I think we were talking about perhaps committee of the whole, and then with COVID, I think everything just changed. But I agree with you, Ari, I'm not talking about committee, talking about liaison.
Right.
And Susan, to answer your question, yeah, we can get some information over to, to folks that can give you a picture of what it, what it looks like and, and how it gets organized and how it can be helpful.
And that's a big, I think it makes a big difference when you get to see it and tell a story, right, Jen? Yeah.
Sal, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I think when we're talking about a platform for learning management over the next several years, I think it is important for people to have information. But also, I think it's important for us to entrust and, and have a little bit of faith in the people that we have in our district that make these decisions, too. Ultimately, it comes down to a situation where we have to have the faith in our administrators to make these kinds of decisions. And sure, there are going to be pros and cons. I don't know how much more information. I don't know how much more information we're going to get between now and the next meeting and what the cons would be compared to what we're going to not be able to do in the timeframe. And we're talking about three weeks out and then templates. You know, I would hate to miss an opportunity to have our teachers and our administrators have what they need going into next year. And I, I do think it's a valid point. We need to have the information that we need. But ultimately, it also does come down to a situation where we need to entrust the, the ability for our administrators and our faculty to make decisions for our students.
Entrust, absolutely.
And why are we even a board? So I, I agree with you. We have to have faith and trust, but we also have to function as a board responsibly and with information.
I agree, but my-
Great.
Given the fact that we've been presented information now and we've been presented the pros and cons, my question is how much more information are we going to get between now and three weeks from now to make a more educated decision?
We're talking about a, a systems management program that is very closely related to the curriculum, which is very closely related to what the teacher and the administrators do. They're the ones that choose and pick the way it's going to be taught, how it's going to be taught. We're not in the classroom with them. So I agree with Sal, we have to trust what Jen Saska and the rest of her, um, her, I hate to use the word committee, and the rest of her group decide is appropriate, especially considering, uh, that it's already been in use. It's not something that's just being pulled out of the air. It's something that's already been in use.
I would argue that we haven't seen examples of this with the younger grade levels. And I, I think if we vote on this tonight, I would liken it to buying a car without test driving at first. I would like to see examples. I would like to literally test drive this program and see what we're investing in. Um, it is going to infect, going to affect all of our parents, all of our students in this entire district for multiple years. And I'd like to know that we are making the best decision possible with the information available to us. I absolutely trust Dr. Ruchi. Uh, I absolutely trust Ms. Saxa and their decision-making, but I would like more information. Because I, I am also responsible for making a decision. I've been voted in, we all have been voted in by the members of this community to make responsible and fully informed decisions when dealing with taxpayer dollars.
You're also talking to somebody who uses a different platform in another place. And for that community, that platform works. But we're talking, we're not driving the car. We're here to make sure that it's, that the people that we have in place are able to make decisions to buy the best car for the community. So if those people are coming to me and saying, here's the facts, here's why it works best, then honestly, unless I have a really big issue with it, I'm going to put my trust in those people and say, well, you're the person who's working in that community to make that happen. Now, I'm sure there's going to be bumps in the road with any learning management system, but to sit here and say that we need to look at, I, my, really what I'm looking at is how much more information are we going to get between now and three weeks from now? And what are the ramifications of not saying yes now to that decision? And how that will affect next year? Because the time is ticking.
I, I, um, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, Sal. I think you bring up really good points, especially I know this is an interesting situation with, um, you know, how, how much limited time we do have. Um, I, I, um, you know, the contract says it was for June 1st. And so, um, w- why couldn't this have been presented last meeting? Why, why couldn't we have had a presentation on this last meeting? And i- if I feel like I don't have all the information or, you know, I'm getting the information today, I need to vote on it today, the public certainly didn't have the information before today. And, um, that, that's really where this concern comes from. Um, I think everyone's making good points. Again, I, I agree with Kristin. I, I trust Dr. Ruchi. I trust Ms. Saxa with their decisions. I, I really appreciate everyone from the curriculum committee, um, vo- voicing what was discussed. Um, I just think this should have been discussed at last meeting.
And I also want to, thank you. And I also want to just reiterate, I think we're reaching a point now where we understand that the methods in which we share information between the liaisons and ourself maybe need to change. We need to maybe evolve that. That happens over time. I'm not saying that that's the case. I'm just looking at this specifically and saying that, that this specific item or these two items, that there may be a timepiece to it where it may be more beneficial to use the information that we have now and make a decision.
Dr. Ruchi?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. So two points that I would like to respectfully make to the group. Number one, with all due respect, I think if you look back over the last year and try to count the number of times that we have brought something to you and asked you to vote on it that evening, they have been few and far between. Our goal always is to get information to you ahead of, ahead of time. This is a tight timeframe within which we're working. We did not even think we were going to be able to do this. We only became aware that we could do it because of CARES funding. The CARES funding window, there was a two-week window of time to input that application. So that's my first point with, where I just want to make that respectfully, to please, you know, keep that in mind. Second, if you don't vote on this this evening, let's, let's play this through. I'm a teacher in the district. The Chester County Intermediate Unit Agreement is probably going, it sounds like it, that's going to go through. Jen said there's 10 hours, teachers can participate in those 10 hours of professional development um, at their own pace and it within their own schedule. But if I, as a teacher here, but the board didn't vote on the Canvas agreement and will not be voting on the Canvas agreement until July 9th, then in my mind, quite frankly, I'm going to be thinking, well, there's a chance the board won't approve it. So if they don't approve it, why should I go and spend my 10 hours i- if that window of time works for me right now? So, so that's, I, I just ask that you please think about the timelines that we have been working under, particularly over these last four weeks.
If I could suggest, you know, I, I understand everyone's concerns and I respect everyone's concerns. I'd like to suggest that we vote, um, up or down. Um, and, you know, I certainly understand if folks are not comfortable voting yes. We don't need to vote unanimously on everything. Uh, that's part of the, that's part of the process, so. You want to do a roll call? That'd be great. Thanks, Bob. Dr. Crispin?
Hang on, just for clarification, we're voting on Chester County IU agreement?
Yes.
Just to be clear, yes, yes, good. And that is a yes vote. Okay, yes vote.
Have we even, uh, seconded it or have we even, uh? Yeah, we did, we did get a motion and a second. Okay, Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Larson?
No.
Uh, Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sinta?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
No.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg? Yes, seven voting yes. Motion carries. Yes, seven to. Thank you, everybody. Moving right along. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of Canvas K-12 Bundled Services Support and Subscription Through Instructure for a one-year total cost of $50,972.50.
Crispin moved.
Short second. Moved and second. Any additional discussion?
Um, I just wanted to clarify that, um, Jen, I think you said there could be a presentation on this, um, next time. Will, will there be a presentation on it? Um, can we guarantee that?
Yes, Jen already has the teachers lined up.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay. Seven voting yes. Thank you. Next, I'll accept the motion to approve the Educational Licensing Agreement with Curriculum Associates for the Eye-Ready Assessment and Personalized Instruction for Math and Reading and Professional Development for one year at a cost of $37,404.50.
Larson moved. Kristin second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll accept the motion, uh, for insurance coverages for the 2020-2021 school year as provided by Arthur J. Calliger and Company, the district's broker, broker of record as listed.
Moved, Minji.
Crispin second.
Wedeman.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the resignations as listed. Short move. Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the appointments as listed.
Moved, Minji.
Second shorts. Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Feinberg, before we go on, can I just comment on the one appointment that was, that's there? Um, we look forward to welcoming Vanessa Robtison to our administrative staff. Um, she will be joining us as an assistant principal, athletic director, uh, over at the high school. And when we can get a time to, for her to meet folks, um, I'm sure that will be on the top of her planning list as well as Mr. Donaghy's, um, planning list to, uh, introduce her to our coaching staff and, uh, different parent groups and of cour- and of course, the board.
Thanks, Dr. Ruchi. We'll look forward to that. I'll accept the motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Moved, Minji.
Sinta second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of Special Counsel and Authorized Settlement of Pending Special Education Administrative proceeding 6-40561 for placement of a special education student for the 2018-2019 school year in an amount not to exceed $23,000.
So moved. Minji.
We get a second.
Sorry, Crispin second.
All in, uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the schedule of school board meetings for the 2020-2021 school year. Short move.
Wedeman second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board reports. Antoinette?
Uh, hold on. Okay, um, yeah, I'll just be really quick. Um, and this sort of goes back to our really exemplary high school students that we had earlier today. Um, tomorrow is a celebration known as Juneteenth. And I really hope that everyone takes the time to, uh, learn about that. Um, and, and even more than that, to talk to their kids about it. Um, you know, I think a lot of folks in the community, a lot of businesses, um, you know, are, are really trying to foster that sort of communication. Um, and so I hope that everyone takes the opportunity tomorrow to think about it. Um, and to also have, have these discussions with their children, especially in this, um, you know, celebratory way. Um, so I would just encourage folks to do that. And, um, also congratulations on everyone for finishing out the year, um, which I think was overlooked a little bit. Um, but all of our students, um, finished out the year yesterday. And a special congratulations to all of our seniors. Um, you know, good luck on all of your endeavors and, um, you know, we hope to see you back.
Thanks, Antoinette. Ari?
I just want to thank the Supreme Court of the United States of America for two huge decisions in the last couple of days that while not directly impacting, um, me or my life, not necessarily impacting the school board, it will possibly impact our administration and our teachers and make their job easier to do for more kids in our country. So I applaud them.
Thanks, Ari. Dave?
Yeah, Ari, thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to echo what you said. Yes, congratulations to SCOTUS, you know, who'd have thought that? Um, also, once again, thank you to our, um, high school students for, 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 for the march. I already spoke a bit about that earlier. And Steve Vanessa is still on the call. So I want to welcome you to, um, the, the district and look forward to meeting you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Kristin?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly talk a book that I'm reading called White Fragility by Robin DeAngelo. Um, it is subtitled, Why It's So Hard For White People To Talk About Racism. And I am trying to educate myself, um, in light of recent events about how to be less fragile when it comes to my whiteness and also to, um, be a better crusader for social and racial change. Um, I highly recommend this book to other white people out there. This, you know, instead of just, let's all be nice to each other. Um, or if someone asks me about racism or pushes back on something I do or any microaggressions I might, um, inflict on others, I can reflect on those instances rather than getting angry and upset and shutting down the conversation. So I think this is a really important book. Um, it is written by a white woman and she acknowledges that. Um, but I, I've just found it very enlightening and I'm continuing, continuing to educate myself and be on this journey to be a, um, anti-racist. So, White Fragility.
Great, thank you. Laura?
Um, well, it's been a busy few weeks for me. Um, I think last we met, I had no electricity and my electricity is back on, so that's a, that's good. Um, I already spoke about attending the, um, Haver Town Stands with Black Lives Matter March and Protest. Um, so once again, just congratulations to the students. Um, just really, really, I, I just, I can't say enough about these wonderful students that organized it. Um, and I guess they graduated, so congratulations on your graduation. Um, uh, in addition to that, I attended several curriculum liaison meetings, um, the most recent of which was on Monday of this week. Um, I really appreciate the work of Ms. Saxa and her team in continuing to review the math curriculum. Um, and you know that I love math. Um, so considering to find new ways, uh, for new materials, new resources that are very excellent and can really add to our curriculum, but also which are cost-saving and many of the ones that they're considering, um, are actually free. So, um, I think down the line, we'll hear more about that as they continue to review the math curriculum. Um, I also do appreciate that I know everything in the world is upside down right now, but that our district is continuing to continuously review and revise our curriculum, um, bringing multiple viewpoints to bear across the curriculum, um, considering ways to support the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students, our teachers, our parents, um, during this virtual world that we now live in. Um, and I think that that last point is especially worth mentioning as we consider what the fall might look like and how all of these different groups might need help transitioning into a very uncertain fall. Um, so thank you to that whole group for, for thinking about, um, the whole child and also the teachers and the parents as well. Um, and then finally, yesterday, is that yesterday? Um, I attended my first legislative breakfast, um, or was that Wednesday? Now I'm losing track of dates. Um, but I, I'm certain that Dr. Ruchi or Mr. Feinberg will provide more details about it. Um, I just wanted to say one small silver lining, um, in moving to all of these online platforms is that normally I wouldn't be able to attend the legislative breakfast because of my normal work hours. But because it was online, I was able to watch, um, and really understand a lot of the issues and policies that are being discussed in Harrisburg. Um, I have to say, I was extremely impressed by Dr. Ruchi. Um, her comments and her questions during the meeting were just, they were fantastic. And she's providing a very, very strong voice for public schools in our school district and also across our county. Um, so the event was very educational for me. And I hope that we have more of these virtually throughout the summer so that I can keep attending them. Um, and again, congratulations to the graduates. Uh, the graduation ceremony was great and it was great to see all the buses rolling through and the students outside celebrating with their neighbors. Um, so yeah, enjoy your- So yeah, enjoy your summer, everyone.
Thanks, Laura. Sal?
Your report.
Susan?
Well, actually, I was going to talk about the curriculum liaison as well that Laura spoke about. I was going to congratulate Jen Saskia and Dr. Rishi and the team in the administrative offices on the diligent work that they've done. You know, in the last three months, I think most of us have been so focused on our children and how the children are learning and what's going on and hearing from parents that this doesn't work or this works. And in my mind, that's what was going on day to day, that our teachers and our principals and our curriculum people were talking about how to make Thursday work or Friday work, when in reality, they've been doing an incredible amount of work thinking about what's to come, what's it going to be like? It's never going to be the same, at least not in my lifetime, I don't think. So they are already thinking about what can we use to network in the classroom? What can we use as a backbone in our schools? So I just wanted to congratulate them on that and I wanted to tell everyone about it. The math program is really exciting because Jeff went online and found much, much free material. And it's particularly helpful because our Singapore math, our license, I think, for all the online stuff is done in January. But by then, we'll be using Canvas and we're using the One to World Initiative, I hope, to get the math going in another way, which, and is also in an expensive way. The other thing I want to talk about is social studies because I, I am old enough to be a sickler for dates, et cetera. But everything I read about the future, everything I read about what people expect from children in college and children in high school is critical thinking, learning how to read critically, learning how to answer, answer critical questions. And I congratulate Sandy on our social studies committee. The secondary social studies curriculum will be implemented. And, you know, that we have some programs up there that are really excellent on, on the par with, with, all by themselves. And K-2 units are also going to be pioneered this year. And three to five units want to continue to develop, which, having had experience with three to five, I'm not surprised. But the One World Haverford is the exciting piece of all of this. Children are going to have a device, children are going to learn how to use the device so much better than any of us can use it. And they're going to be able to do their math curriculum and, and do the critical thinking piece. And I'm very proud of that. It's such a step, the progression of watching us grow. I remember a long time ago, we talked about getting to grade, going from good to great. And I just watched Haverford rise. So I congratulate the curriculum department and Dr. Rishi on a job well done.
Thank you, Susan. Bridgette?
Just briefly, I wanted to say congratulations to our graduates. And I thought graduation night was a wonderful community celebration. It was nice to see everybody come out and rally behind our seniors. And I'm glad the weather held out so that those outdoor celebrations could take place. I have an eighth grader, so I was also able to participate in the car line clapout and had a couple of her teen teachers come to the door there at the last days of school to, to say goodbye and do their well wishes. So having those kinds of personal moments and milestones built in to a year that otherwise, you know, lacked some of the favorite moments, it was important that those things happened. And I appreciate the extra effort of the staff to, to send the kids out with that kind of joy and celebration. I just wanted to say, you know, with some of our newest graduates here on the meeting tonight, I think they were exemplary in demonstrating the mission of our district in helping to foster engaged, informed citizens. And kudos to them for already making a mark in our community and on the world. And also wanted to just mention the legislative breakfast and Dr. Rishi's comments and, and what she added to the discussion, I think, was really important and helpful. She talked about needing to coordinate among districts and have more equity in school funding, getting better guidance on some of these school opening decisions and looking for relief from some mandates like the ten miles of busing that we do. And I think laid a groundwork for hopefully a positive conversation with the legislators that were in attendance and hopefully will be part of the slow process of getting some, some changes and benefits for not just Haverford School District, but for schools across the state. So it was, it was great to participate in that. And thank you, Dr. Rishi, for your important contributions.
Thanks, Bridgette. On the legislative side, during the month of May, I was able to work with Pennsylvania Citizens for Children and Youth to help coordinate a number of countywide teen town halls where high school students met in Zoom meetings with typically a congressperson and several of their state senators and state legislators to talk about whatever issues were important to them. Those were very well attended. As a follow-up, last Friday, there was a regional teen town hall that focused specifically on race and the current issues. And June Park represented Haverford. The students were positively eloquent. I, I think that it is really powerful for legislators and members of Congress to, to have an opportunity to hear directly from our students. I think that it's, it, it makes the case in a much stronger fashion, perhaps than someone like myself or my fellow board members could do. The legislative breakfast last Wednesday, we had about seventy or so people on the call. The keynote was the chairman of the House Education Committee, Kirk Sonny. There was pretty good attendance by Delaware County legislators, both Mike Zabel and Greg Vitale from Haverford were there for us. Most of the state senators from Delaware County. And while it's not quite the same as being in a big room with everybody, I, I think it was still a good meeting. And as Laura said, it's, it's much more convenient sometimes to be able to just jump on a, on a call like this. So in, in the current discussion of race and equity, you know, at the state level, one of the things that is most significant is fair funding. I think we need to double down on advocacy efforts. You know, it, it, it is a plain, simple fact that, you know, wealthy districts like Haverford or Lower Marion can afford to spend a lot more money per student. And I've worked enough with board members in our neighboring districts to have a, a palpable understanding of the kinds of challenges that they face that we never really have to worry about because we're so fortunate to live in a well-funded school district. Most of the kids in the underfunded districts are black or brown. Plain and simple. If we want, if we want equity, we need fair funding. We need to, we need Harrisburg to adopt a formula and fund a formula. We're lucky, our legislators for Haverford have all been very supportive in this regard. But that's a, that's a fight that we're going to need to keep fighting. I can't stress that one enough. Certainly want to congratulate the graduates. I thought the, you know, the ceremony was awesome. And seeing the celebrations out in the neighborhoods was, was great. You know, and we're sorry we weren't able to all be on the stage in, in the auditorium at St. Joe's, but I think all things considered, it was a wonderful evening. In closing, you know, certainly want to thank all, all our students, all our parents, Dr. Rishi Administration, our principals, all the teachers, all the support staff. We know that this has been one heck of a few months here, going back to March thirteenth. I hope that everybody has an opportunity to go chill out and not be, not be online worrying about getting their online homework done. And I hope that we're able to actually enjoy some of the things that we typically would enjoy in the summer. Housekeeping, if you'll bear with me for a minute. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting tonight to review the district's Safe Schools Report and Special Education Due Process Proceedings. In addition, the board had an opportunity to review personnel matters, including administrative and other appointments, resignations and leaves of absence. Our next regular public board meeting will be held July ninth, 2020 via Zoom. Same time, same place. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. And this year, I have, this, this week, I have a weapon to keep my family in line.
I'm moving. Looking forward to seeing the gavel.
Thanks, everybody. We're out of here.
Thanks.